Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Gracious heavens, my father. For the blessings bestowed on us this day and in the recent Christmas season. Thank you for the things we seem to take for granted without much thought as to how really fortunate we are. As we celebrate the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King, help us to recall that we are all God's people and that we are to love one another as God loves us. Help us to remember that being a good neighbor solves many problems. Impress on parents of students the need to help their student in their learning process and to encourage them to persevere. Protect our police, fire, and military personnel as they perform their dangerous duties. Comfort those who are experiencing recent loss of a family member or loved one. Provide wisdom to this council mayor and city officials. God bless us all. God bless America. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, once again, welcome to City Hall. Tonight's our Tuesday, January 17th edition. We will have roll call, please.
Bray.
Here.
Carroll. Harvey.
Here.
Coon.
Here.
Lubert.
Here.
Pope.
Here.
Schulte.
Here.
Scrivener. Weber.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. Next, under number five, President Pro Tem David Griffith obviously resigned earlier this month to take a job with the Red Cross. So at this point in time, we will open it up for elections of President Pro Tem. Mr. Harvey.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Bob Weber for President Pro Tem.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we elect Councilman Robert Weber as Mayor Pro Tem. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, I feel you're ready to vote. Roll call, please.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll. Harvey.
Aye.
Coon.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivener. Weber.
Aye.
All right, congratulations, Bob. Do a good job for the city.
Thank you very much.
All right, next, public hearings. Janice McMillan.
Thank you, Mayor. This application was referred out of the Planning and Zoning Commission at their December 8th meeting. Thank you. This property is located at 216 El Mercado Plaza, and the application was to amend the PUD plan so that a commercial laundry facility could be operated out of the building that's located at this site. Here is an air photo of the building on the end of the cul-de-sac at El Mercado Plaza and a couple of photographs of the building. Currently, the use of the building includes some office space and classroom space. The operation will provide pickup and delivery service to clients. It does not offer service to the general public. No site improvements are necessary as all the requirements are already there. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Janice? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience tonight to speak in favor of this measure? Is there anyone to speak against? Seeing none, council discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please. End third reading.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri approving an amended final PUD plan for property located at 216 El Mercado Plaza described as part of the southwest quarter and part of the southeast quarter of Section 4, Township 44 North, Range 12 West, Jefferson City, Cole County, Missouri.
Roll call, please.
Bray.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Coon.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Moving on, we have the following minutes and reports filed here at City Hall. We appreciate everyone who serves on our different boards and committees, Campo Technical Committee, the Housing Authority Board of Commissioners, the Cultural Arts Commission, and Parks and Recreation Commission. Moving on, we have council reports. The Administration Committee is chaired by Councilwoman Carrie Carroll. Carrie's on her way back in town, and their next meeting will be February 8th. Our Finance Committee is chaired by Councilman Rich Coon.
Thank you, Mayor. The Finance Committee did not meet this month. Our next meeting is February 16th, but the good news is that for the first three months of the year, the sales tax revenue is up $237,000. Last year at this time, we were behind projections, so...
All right, thank you. Any questions for Rich? Moving on to public safety, Bob's, or excuse me, Councilman Mike Harvey.
Thank you, Mayor. The Public Safety Committee has not met since our last council meeting. Our next scheduled meeting is February 2nd at approximately 8:00 a.m. across the hall.
Thank you, Mike. Moving on, Public Works and Planning Committee is chaired by Councilman Bob Scrivener, and that next meeting will be held on January 19th. Any council liaison reports this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to appointments by the mayor. At this point in time, I would call on our Chief of Police, Roger Schrader.
Tonight, I'm submitting to you, Mr. Mayor, Teresa Clerkin for appointment to the position of Evidence Technician. She's out of state this week. She'll appear before the council at the next meeting. She couldn't be here tonight, obviously. She, Teresa, was originally, or is originally, from Kansas City. She obtained her Bachelor of Science degree in forensic science with a minor in biology and criminal justice from Columbia College. She's post-licensed as a law enforcement officer in the state of Missouri, and she's been employed by the Callaway County Sheriff's Department for the past four years as a deputy sheriff where her duties included property management. Thank you.
Okay, at this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to approve. It's been moved and seconded, discussion, seeing none. Roll call, or voice vote, please. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Next, we have a long list of appointees tonight for the Stormwater Quality Commission, our CBB, the Historic Preservation Commission, the Environmental Quality Commission, the Plumbing Board, the Electrical Board, the Police Personnel Board, Planning and Zoning, and the Cultural Arts Commission. At this point in time, we will entertain a motion to approve all of those following appointments.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion, seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes. Next, we'll have presentations from staff, consultants, and invited guests. First, I have Charlie Palmer with the Lewis &amp; Clark Monument, and next, we'll have Jim Crabtree. Charlie, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for this opportunity to tell you what has happened with the task force with regard to the monument last year. I think you have the numbers in front of you. As you will see, we're down some in all categories. The weekday numbers refer primarily to school kids who come up and visit various places in the city, and I think they fell afoul of the budgets. There were very few. We had about eight of them last year, as generally we get more than that. I think there are budgets that are out to travel, but there's no travel money for most of them. As far as the weekends, we have docents on board, Saturdays, Sundays, holiday Mondays. They were also down. We had rain in the spring and heat in July and August, and, well, the numbers are down, folks, but we're still struggling and we're trying. Do you have any questions about those?
Any questions of the council? Charlie, I just want to thank you and your organization for what you do. I mean, we're so, so lucky to have that type of monument right here in our capital city. And, I mean, since I was obviously a kid, we went to church at St. Peter's, and a lot of times, we would spend time around the Capitol, you know, before Mass or after Mass. And just a great deal, and really do appreciate everything you and your organization does for us.
Well, we're trying, and we're going forward. We have our schedules for the docents who will be, again, on the monuments on the weekends and also weekdays. We're expecting some, we had already some calls from schools saying they're going to come back again. Last year, we washed and waxed the monument two times. Last time was in September. We'll do it again in May or June of this year and in September. We're also dealing with OA on trimming and thinning of the floor and the fauna around the monument. It grew. Those trees and bushes do like it there, and we've started it. We're trying to get our act together with some more, with some additional volunteers from the community to help us with that. Let's see, trimming, we've got all that done. We, as you know, CBB is going gangbusters, no pun intended, at the prison. Most of those are groups, come in on busloads, and they've got a schedule planned, so we don't get much fallout from that. However, CBB is active in sending people to us who come in or contact them for things to see in Jeff. We're on the, we're on a website. We can access it through the Department of Tourism and also through the city, as well as Parks and Rec. Our home location is at, and also in CBB. It's at Parks and Rec, and when people come on the other ones, the satellites, they eventually get back to the main thing, so that's up and running. That's about it. We're still going. We have a cadre of dedicated people. If any of you know of people who are interested in history, Lewis &amp; Clark or the Louisiana Purchase, we'd love to talk to them. We need young blood. Everybody in the Lewis &amp; Clark organizations across the country are having trouble. Lewis &amp; Clark is over. The bicentennial is no longer. There'll be another one in 2050, but we could use some folks in between. So if you've got some folks who wants to do it, we'd love to have them. First Friday, first Thursday of every month at the library, we meet.
Charlie, can you repeat that once again for the people at home?
I beg pardon?
When do you meet again, please?
First Thursday of every month at the library.
Okay. Great. What time?
Five thirty to seven.
Okay.
And we adhere to the clock, as you just did.
Any questions for Charlie this evening? Charlie, thanks again for being here. You guys do a great, a great job for our city, and our heritage to Lewis &amp; Clark is obviously great.
And thanks to all of you and your support for us through Parks and Rec. Without them, we'd be dead. Thank you.
We'll take that as an added boy for Bill's department. Okay, moving on. Next, I have on the agenda, Mr. Jim Crabtree. Jim, how you doing, sir?
Doing well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, I have, I am Jim Crabtree, reside at 1714 in Jefferson City, 1714 Serra Lane in Jefferson City, Missouri. And my comments tonight pertain to a resolution that Melva Fast will present for an Urban Waters Grant. And what I'd like to do is take you back a little bit in time, so that you can get a broader perspective of this grant and how it will dovetail into where we've been and then where we're going. If you recall, the greening of America's state capitals was a grant that Jefferson City was one of five state capitals in the country to receive, and as a part of that process, there was an extensive public workshop process that solicited concerns the public has to uplift areas surrounding capital that needed attention. And one of the major areas that was determined was quite underutilized was the Where's Creek Mill Bottom area. That's really the front door, the front porch to the state capital. All the tourists, probably quarter million tourists that come into the state capital travel through that area, either through Main Street or coming in on Missouri Boulevard. And what we found is that underutilized area is pretty much a sea of parking and an area that gets significantly impacted by floodwaters. So with the help of a consultant, we went through a process and looked at designs, looked at alternatives to green that area up, both literally and figuratively in terms of becoming a little bit more environmental, and create a public space in Greenway Extension that would make that area much more desirable. And many of you have seen the end product that the greening of state capitals had, which is really a vision of how that area can be reorganized, how parking can be readdressed, and we can lessen the impacts of floodways, provide a recreational destination, and a much more attractive area as the gateway to our state capital. After that, through the, with the chambers transformation efforts, a Mill Bottom Action Team was established, and that Mill Bottom Action Team really took a lot of the recommendations and the overall picture that the greening of America's state capitals presented and reanalyzed it, and it kind of retested some of the fundamentals to see if they were truly valid and where we wanted to go. And the end result of that process was really a reinforcement of the overall picture that was presented by the consultants in the greening of state capitals plan, but also looking at how can we begin taking steps to get to that point? Because it was really a broad, general picture that was painted. And those steps included, you know, going down, looking at Where's Creek, doing a cleanup, removing the hazards and the obstacles that exist there, seeing if there are ways of providing access, discussions with Office of Administration in terms of the potential of reorganizing the parking, talking to a consultant to see, can the parking be reorganized without a significant loss of parking? And we found that it could. And then looking at the need for engineering studies on that floodway, as well as moving into the need for a more detailed and more tested master plan, which is really the threshold that sits before the transformation project that you have heard about. But one of the outcomes was on October 1st, we held a Where's Creek cleanup, and we had over 125 citizens that helped clean up six-mile stretch of Where's Creek. And out of that, 480 pounds of trash recyclables and 1.2 tons of scrap steel were removed from that creek in really a two-and-a-half-hour stretch on a Saturday morning. But more impressively was the enthusiasm and the support that 125 residents had, and in addition to that, the solicitations that we've since had from scout organizations and other civic groups that want to see that happen again and want to see some further development on cleaning up Where's Creek. So that set in the stage for this Urban Waters Grant. One of the outcomes of the greening of state capitals was that process involved EPA, HUD, and now I'm pulling the presidential debate. What was the other one? Department of Transportation, yes, Federal Department of Transportation, to those agencies. And when they have a grant request, instead of starting at the bottom with a grant request, we're moved to the top for consideration as being one of the five cities for this. And part of the purpose of the greening of state capitals was really to set the city up for the potential of receiving such grants. So EPA has recommended that we go after this Urban Waters Grant because Where's Creek really does have the potential to be transformed into an attractive public space, a recreation destination, and has the potential, we have the potential of really lessening the impact of environmental, social, and economic issues, as well as provide benefits. So the grant that we're going after is going to focus on the Where's Creek section between West McCarty Street and West Main, and the purpose of the grant is really to take it to that next step and do more refinement, more engineering, and then come out with some specific outcomes for that stretch in terms of improvements, as well as educational opportunities, so people can see what certain measures can mean in terms of results. So those are my comments.
Jim, excuse me, I got a cough drop that went down the wrong way. Thanks for being here, and thanks for your passion. I was there the day of the, I think it was October 1st.
It was.
When you did the cleanup, and to see all the stuff that came out of really the basin of our city. It was, I mean, to me, it was almost embarrassing to see that much stuff, that much trash, but I know your work, your group does a lot of work, and we appreciate that. Any questions for Jim this evening? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Coon, did you have something? We can wait, we can do both of them after 13, if you'd like.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on, next on our agenda, we have a report here from Nathan Nicholas in regards to Transformation and the Conference Center. Nathan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, let's do the conference, okay. Do the other one first. This is kind of a transformation, there's been a lot of questions about exactly how transformation would work, and this is sort of a graphic to try and show you how it would work, and we're going to put this up on our website for people. Basically, though, what you have, if you can go to the next slide, there'll be a Transformation Board appointed. That Transformation Board is set up by statute, and you can see the representations. All of the people, I think the key thing to note is all the people on the Transformation Board are appointed by elected bodies. They're not just coming from somewhere. Next slide, please. It will be a public body. That question's been asked, and so they'll be governed by the Sunshine Law. They will receive public input. What they will do is, using the city's bidding procedure and RFP procedures, they will select consultants, architects, engineers, and eventually contractors to do these projects. Now, as they consult, as they come up with these, so they'll do an RFP, for instance, for an architect, they'll go through that process and find somebody that they think is appropriate, and then come back to the council and ask the council to approve that contract. So very much the same way that we do projects right now for other committees and boards. And then most of those will kind of cycle through twice. You'll see, it'll come through once for the appointment of the architect or engineer, and then come through again when we're ready to award a construction contract. They, that board is only five people. They've got six liaisons to it as well, but even with that, there's a tremendous amount of work that they will need to do, assuming that the proposal passes. And there's really no way that five people can do that all by themselves, so we anticipate that they will need to have committees, and the organizational structure we're recommending is to appoint project action teams, and there would be some number of those. They will consist primarily of citizens who were involved in the transformation process. There's, I think, 400, if I remember the number correctly, that were involved in that process, and so they've developed some expertise in all of these projects, and so some of those, we would hope, would volunteer for those. New citizens who may not have been involved in transformation but may want to get involved at this point in time, the liaisons from the different boards and committees and things that sit on the transformation, and then, of course, there may be some representation from the committee members themselves, the board members. And then, from the city staff's point of view, what we will provide is obviously a lot of staffing for these. So we typically, for all city boards and committees, provide staffing, meaning somebody there to take the minutes, somebody there to help them keep them organized, somebody there to do the tasks that they need done. So we will provide staffing for all of those. Roger Schwartz, our newly elected, newly appointed Director of Public Works, will be the point man for all of the projects, and his job will be to keep track of all the 30 projects and how they're progressing and making sure they're all moving forward at a good rate. We will also do some of the work in-house on small projects, but there's really more work than what we could do in the kind of timeframe that I think that the public wants to achieve. So we anticipate that most of the work that's being done will be contracted out to engineers and people like that. But we'll do what we can in-house, and then what we can't do, city staff will supervise those architects and engineers and contractors, just like we do with city projects now. And that's kind of the quickie version of how this would work.
Any questions from the council for Nathan? Okay, Nathan, next topic.
Okay, the next is really even briefer. This is the Conference Center, and kind of just to update you all on where we are on the Conference Center. As you may recall, the council wanted us to go out for a market study, so the RFP for that is on the street now, as they say. That went out in the middle of December. We anticipate, in fact, we know, that January 31st will be the date when we'll get reports, we'll get RFPs back from those people willing to do that service, and then we have suggested to them that May 31st would be the day we would like to have that work completed. However, since the timeline is short, we have given them the option to take longer amount of time if they need it, and then the price would then reflect that. So if they want to do it fast and maybe charge us a little bit more, or do it a little slower and pay us a little, and we charge them a little, they charge us a little less, those options are in that proposal. I know that we've gotten some inquiries, and so I have good hope that we will get some good, positive proposals sent in on that. And then, of course, after that's done, the council will pick a site, and once they've picked a site, then we can really get down to seriously designing what the Conference Center is going to look like.
Okay, questions to Nathan? Nathan, thanks for those updates. It's very important that we're ready as a city, especially with our staff, on February 8th, after Transformation passes, if it passes. Moving on, we will have an update tonight from Randy Allen and someone who's no stranger to this room, former mayor John Landwehr. Gentlemen, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. For the record, Randy Allen, 213 Adams Street, and I have my partner here, John Landwehr, who you've just aptly introduced. We were charged with the responsibility of taking care of putting together the MOUs or letters of intent from the basic property owners or interested parties that are, that are as a part of the Transformation projects. I reported to you, I believe, November the 7th, as you passed the sales tax ballot issue, that we would be coming back to you with some of these in hand, and tonight, we're going to report that we have, in fact, done that. We have four letters of intent dealing with two specific projects, the letters of intent from Lincoln University and the Sisters of St. Mary's with regard to the project at the soon-to-be-vacated St. Mary's facility, and then letters of intent from Hawthorne Bank and from Central Bank with regard to the downtown parking and pass-through project in downtown Jefferson City. And then finally, we have an MOU that has been signed by the Office of Administration with regard to the MSP site and the projects that would occur there, as well as the issue of the two Conference Center sites. So one of the Conference Center sites was at the prison site, and the other Conference Center site was state-owned property at the corner of McCarty and Broadway. So if you have any questions about that, obviously, we are very pleased, the Transformation Process is very pleased with the outcome. We, you know, obviously want to thank the Office of Administration, the administration, all those people that were involved in putting together that. That was a long haul. That was a long haul, starting back in April, when Senator Kehoe and Commissioner Simmons got everybody together and said, "We need to get our act together on this, and let's move forward." So I think it was very successful. Long-term commitment to the project in terms of having CVB operate tours at that facility. Again, two Conference Center sites that they basically said, "These are both acceptable to the State of Missouri. You go decide which one you want, and then come back and tell us." And then, the effort for the state to continue to maintain that MSP site, and finally, the ability for the MSPRC to develop, once the road is in, develop that property for private use. All those things, very big as we move forward. Unless you have any questions of me, I want to turn this over to John, he has a few remarks.
Any questions for Randy? Okay. Mayor Landwehr.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. I have a couple of observations, and they're maybe not so much directed at you, but certainly to you, but also maybe to the community as a whole. It was a pleasure to work with the Transformation team on working out the four or five arrangements that we've been able to bring to you tonight and in recent weeks. I think what's significant about those partnerships is that unlike some economic development efforts that other communities have experienced, these five agreements provide a very broad base of current partners who are already part of our economic fabric. They're not newcomers with some latest and greatest new idea. They are our own institutions who are ready to invest with us. They're looking beyond the current, sometimes depressing, economic horizons, and announcing their willingness to make investments that will generate growth for years to come, probably beyond the lifetimes of many of us. They're stepping up with us because they know that in today's economic times, there is no middle ground. There is no coasting. There's no treading water. They know that if we don't grow and prosper, we will decline and fail. Hawthorne Bank and Central Bank have been stakeholders in the community for well over 100 years. Lincoln University and St. Mary's Hospital are in the same category. Particularly exciting is the commitment from the State of Missouri to partner with us to hang on to 138 acre treasure, and I mean treasure, that will become an embarrassing array of crumbling buildings in just a few short months if we don't do something. Sometimes the state and we, I think, forget that we are a great capital city of a great state. We have to search for common goals and commit resources to achieve them. That is what this agreement announces. To put this all in context, let me ask you and the community a couple of questions. They're rhetorical questions, but I'll ask them anyway. How long have we wanted to partner with Lincoln University to help find, to help that economic development engine expand and bring its energy more directly into the community? How long have we tried to work on that? And the answer is that Transformation and Lincoln University say, "We can do it now, and this is how we do it." Specific plans, specific goals and objectives that are achievable in the near future. Another question. How will we make sure that the historic, very prominent site of the former St. Mary's Hospital will be something that benefits the community and something we can be proud of, and not a vacant or underutilized site? Once again, a very important question for us in this room and for the community at large. The answer, Transformation and St. Mary's have said with these documents, "We can do it, and this is how." Specific plans, specific timetables, specific funding, specific solutions to a critical question in the future of our city. Finally, with the state's economic woes, how can we be sure that MSP is maintained, made available for community resources and uses for private development, and how can we be sure that it will continue to attract visitors from around the nation and not crumble to the ground? How can we be sure of that? We've struggled with that for over a decade, and the answer is here. Transformation and the Office of Administration are telling us, "We can do it now, and this is how." These agreements are not the final products, but they are the essential first steps in something that's very, very exciting. I can't wait to see how the image, the vibrancy, and the economic vitality of our community will be transformed with investments from the community itself, and especially from these five key partners. Thanks for the opportunity to share a few observations with you.
Any questions for John or Randy this evening? John, on behalf of the community, I want to thank you as a former mayor for working on all these MOUs. I think your knowledge and relationships over the last eight years really brought these to the table. Thank you.
Glad to help. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we'll move on to number 12, announcements of upcoming meetings and events. Janice McMillan.
Thank you, Mayor. At the council's January 9th work session, ward redistricting plan was recommended for public comment. That draft plan is now available on the city's website, and also, we're hosting some open houses on the next couple of Tuesdays and Thursdays. On this Thursday will be our first open house, and that's from 12 noon to 2:00 p.m. in Room 200 across the hall. And we'll host that noon open house again on Thursday, January 26th. Excuse me, on Tuesday, January 31st, from 12 to 2:00. Also, on Thursday, Thursday, January 26th, we'll host another open house from 4 to 7:00, and we'll host that in Room 200. Those schedules are on the city's website, and we'll also host a public hearing on that draft redistricting plan on Monday, February 6th at 6:00 p.m. Anyone who wishes to comment on that draft plan may do so by going to the city's website. We also have a hard copy plan on the lower level of City Hall, and there's some comment forms available if someone wants to leave a written comment. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions to Janice on the redistrict? Okay, seeing none, Janice, thank you very much for that report, very part of, very important part of our city coming up. Coming up next, we have presentations from the gallery on specific bills. We've actually covered that under Mr. Crabtree, and I do show Mr. Jay, is it Birchfield?
Yes, sir.
He's here to speak this evening. This is your time, sir. Please tell us your name and address, and please limit your remarks to five minutes.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, Mr. Mayor, council, Jay Birchfield, 2509 Limerick Lane in Columbia. I'm here to speak in favor of Council Bill 2011-133, the downtown residential parking program. I've just, our family has recently completed the historic renovation of the Wymore Apartments on Washington Street. And as part of that renovation, we basically guided them, did historic rehab, and have repositioned the property to last another 50 years. As the Mayor Landwehr stated, they were about in that crumbling state and ready to go, and needed some serious attention quickly, or they would have been a real project to undertake. I've been listening to the comments at tonight's meeting, and if there's a common theme, it's economic development, from even the Lewis and Clark Monument, the Transformation, the Conference Center, the MOUs that you're discussing. All of that is a theme of economic development, and an important piece of economic development for a city, and particularly in an urban area or an urban neighborhood, is housing. And you have to have an adequate supply of housing. And the, the next step to having adequate housing is having adequate parking in order to house the people there. So it's, it all goes to the theme of this meeting, and the bill, as written, will go a long way towards helping us achieve our goals with our apartments and the 18 units that we've created over there. We basically have repositioned that property to take those three buildings, renovate them, and provide 18 units of very quality luxury housing that creates, helps create a 24-hour environment. And that 24-hour environment in an urban area is critical piece, it's not the solution, but is a piece of the puzzle that helps foster, you know, revitalization, economic development, economic growth of an area. And so, I'm here to speak in favor of the city staff and the council's efforts to put forth Bill 2011-133. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Birchfield, thank you for being here this evening. Is there any questions tonight from the council? Dr. Pope?
Thank you, Mr. Birchfield, for coming to speak about this parking issue. A couple of questions for you. Have you done other historic projects?
Yes, sir. I've, I've been involved in over $100 million worth of historic rehab projects in Kansas City, St. Louis, Columbia, Neosho, Springfield, and now Jeff City.
And have you been able to package those tax credits for those projects?
Yes, sir.
And do you think the Jefferson City market would be something that you would be interested in to further develop our historic prospects?
Yes.
Excellent.
In fact, I've received a couple of calls, real estate agents that have buildings that they want me to look at.
Well, just as a, as a comment, you know, we have this issue of what's going on over at our prison redevelopment, but the area between the Capitol and the prison is in terrific need of redevelopment, and it's some of our finest properties. And I would hope that there would come a time that you would be able to help us work on those properties, because they certainly are our gems, and between the Capitol and the penitentiary, we've got to do something about that. So, thanks for coming and being interested in our city.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions tonight? Mr. Bray?
Thank you. I do have one question. There's a line here, I just want to make sure that you are aware of it, and make sure I understand it. Section 22-264, under the application B, it says, "An application for a permit may be filed by the owner of a qualified residential unit for the benefit of the resident of the qualified residential unit." The way I understand this is you, the owner, would make application for the parking permits for your tenants.
Yes, sir.
Is that your understanding as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, any other questions this evening? Okay, seeing none, thanks a lot for being here.
Thank you.
And on behalf of the whole city, thanks for investing in the city. We really do appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Hopefully, you can do some more down the road.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think I had heard earlier, Councilman Coon was getting ready to make a motion to take up Bills 133, Resolutions 37 and 39 out of order, was that correct?
No, I was going to make a motion to amend the agenda, take up 1138 to 2011-39 out of order.
38 and 39, okay.
38 and 39.
My bad, sorry. It's the hearing thing with this call.
That's okay.
Is there a second? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Okay, we will now have a third reading, or actually, we'll entertain a motion to take up Resolution 2011-38.
So moved.
Discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Bray?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Coon?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Okay, next we'll have, we'll entertain a motion to bring up 2011-39.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion on 2011-39. Seeing none, I feel you're ready to vote. Roll call, please.
Harvey?
Aye.
Coon?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes on both of those. Next, we'll have the consent agenda. We'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Next, we'll move into number 15, back on the agenda, for bills introduced, first reading, please, of 2011-134.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, levying and assessing a special tax bill against particular lots and tracts of land, fronting and abutting the 1,200 and 1,300 blocks of Elmoree Avenue and the 1,100 block of Morrow Drive in the city of Jefferson, Missouri, for the improvement of said curb and sidewalk.
Okay, talking about this this evening is Roger Schwartz. Roger, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the section of Elmoree where the city has completed curb and gutter and sidewalk improvements. 33 property owners have participated in this, and the cost assessed for the improvements is $10 per foot. Those 33 people contributed $23,616 toward the project, but five property owners have decided to go ahead and have it tax billed to them, and that assessment would be $2,633 for those five properties. Any questions?
Any questions there? Councilman Bray?
Roger, I see something in here about an interest rate. Is there any interest applied to those outstanding balances?
There is interest that accrues. That's correct, there is interest that accrues on unpaid debts.
How will that play out? Will that be assessed every month, every year?
Yearly, I believe. Actually, I think, is it every year? Yeah, that's correct. The assessor puts it on the tax bill, and then charges, I think it's 9%, my recollection.
At that...
I'm hearing eight.
Eight, and then probably eight.
Out of my right ear.
I'm sure that is correct.
Follow-up, please?
Yes, sir.
Is it paid off, is a portion of it paid off annually?
It should be. If it's not, it continues to accrue at some point. We had this debate a little bit after some of our meetings, and I gather the assessor is a bit more aggressive and successful than we first thought, but I think it's 10 years. Again, I'll wait to see, it's five, five years, as I recall now. The assessor takes some collection action on it, and would, I suppose, foreclose on the property and sell it if it's not sold.
And one more?
Go ahead.
Are the, are these folks aware of...
That I don't know. I don't, I'm not sure what communication we had with those folks.
Yes, I believe they all, they have all been notified, and they chose to go this route. Okay, all right. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Scrivner, did you have a question?
I did. I'm assuming that it's 500 per property, or approximately, but 2,600 for the, for all the properties, or 26 per property?
No, it's, it's based on the lineal foot, front foot that they have assessed at $10 per foot. So they are all actually different amounts, based on how many, how much front footage they have on the street.
So the collective amount is $2,600?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. And I guess another question, if I can follow up?
Sure.
Councilman Bray's question prompted a question for me. I wonder if these individuals made their decision to let this be tax billed with the understanding that they wouldn't have to pay it within five years, or that it wouldn't be attempted to be collected within five years? And I wonder if they realized that there would be an interest rate? That's a fairly healthy interest rate in today's times, which is fine with me.
I don't know the answer. I think Mr. Schwartz indicated, I'll let him answer.
I don't know what the property owner's decision was as to why they chose this direction.
But it's their decision, right?
It was their decision, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It was their call, right? Okay. Any other questions on 2011-134? Seeing none, we'll have first reading of 2011-135.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an inter-municipal agreement with St. Martins.
Mr. Hilbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, I'll emphasize this, the first reading, there's no vote needed today, and things may change over the next two weeks, who knows? But the current proposal, which has been agreed to by St. Martins, this would resolve our annexation disputes with St. Martins. The agreement is that wastewater rates for folks within St. Martins, as it existed in 1989, would continue to pay the city rate, so if there's any infill, they would get the city rate. Any areas annexed after St. Martins in 1989 would pay two times the base rate, and then, of course, usage on top. This varies from the other county residents who pay three times. Neither party would contest any annexations that have already occurred, and the parties agree to a boundary line, which is identified on a map that is attached to your packet. It is the solid line that essentially runs just west. It is the solid line that essentially runs just west of Binder. There is a small piece of Binder that's past that line, but part of the agreement is that they will not contest our annexation of that area. And Councilmen Pope and Scrivner, I believe, asked for some fiscal impact, and we're still working on that, and we'll have that before we vote next time.
The next couple of weeks. Any questions tonight for Drew? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to first reading of 2011-136.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, vacating and discontinuing a portion of Alameda Drive.
Roger.
Mr. Mayor, thanks. This is a request from the Jefferson City YMCA. Alameda Drive in this area is a stub street. They are the property owner on both sides of that street, and they would simply like to have it vacated so that they could better utilize their property. Be happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions at all from the council? Okay. Seeing none, we'll have a third reading of 120, excuse me, 2011-138.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Schedule G Stop Intersections, Subparagraph B Other Specified Intersections of the Code of the City of Jefferson by the addition of Miller Street at Vedder Lane.
Roger Schwartz, you're up again, sir.
This is a request that came to the Transportation and Traffic Commission to make the intersection of Miller Street and Vedder Lane a four-way stop. Today, the stop signs are on Vedder Street only, and Miller Street is allowed to go through. When our staff looked at this, the traffic volumes are actually such that Vedder Street has almost twice the amount of traffic as what Miller Street does. So we certainly believe that a four-way stop condition is the appropriate control for the intersection.
Okay. Any questions of Roger there? Okay. Moving on to bills pending, we'll have a third reading of 2011-131.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, acquiring property at 711 Mulberry Street in the City of Jefferson, Missouri, using hazard mitigation grant funds for the purposes of clearing the flood plain.
And to tell us more about that, Melva Fast.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the acquisition of a residential lot at the 700 block of Mulberry Street. It is a vacant, substandard property that has some drainage issues in the rear, and so we would purchase, the owner has agreed to the acquisition of the property by the city for $24,000, and then we would demo the site, and it would basically be green space.
Okay. Any questions for staff on 131? But the records show that Carrie's made it. Welcome, Carrie. Okay. Without that, we'll have a roll call, please, on 131.
Coon.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. We'll have third reading now of 2011-132.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the Personnel Policy Manual for Education Reimbursement Rates.
Gail.
Thank you. This ordinance amends the city's tuition reimbursement program. What it does is it changes the requirement for reimbursement to require a grade of B or higher, and it also ties the reimbursement rate to the Lincoln University's current rates. And there's also a substitute in your packet, and that substitute requests the ordinance be made retroactively back to January 1st. The reason for that is there are so many different colleges that are starting classes. Some started last week, some this week, some next week. So we wanted to be able to have all courses that started this month be available to take advantage of this program. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Gail at all? Seeing none, I think you're ready to vote. Roll call, please.
You need a motion on substitute?
Oh, sorry. A motion for the substitute.
I like the move we substitute, accept the substitute.
Is there a second? All in favor of taking up the substitute, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Discussion on the substitute. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Lubert.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Coon.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have 2011-133. Roger's filling in tonight for Brett Smith.
An ordinance amending the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, by creating a downtown residential permit parking program.
There's a substitute in the packet. Do you want to take that up first? Looking for a motion.
I'd make a motion to take up the substitute, please.
Okay. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor taking up the substitute, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Now, we will have discussion on the substitute. Mr. Schwartz.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the bill that Mr. Birchfield was speaking of earlier, and this is our test case that would provide parking for those residents of the Wilmore Apartments that have been upgraded. The bill requires that to be eligible for a permit, you must spend at least $25,000 per unit to upgrade the facility. It must meet all of the city's codes, and the permit would be charged, it would be $20 each for the permit. The parking that would be allowed by permit would be in the two blocks on McCarty Street, as well as the two blocks shown on Washington Street. But it still would not allow parking next to the post office. That would still remain as short-term parking with no meters in that block. This bill also does establish meters on that section of Washington Street between McCarty and the alleyway. Questions?
Okay. Any questions of staff this evening? Question, Bob?
Actually, I want to make a comment, if I may.
Do you want to do that underneath comments?
I can do that later. Pardon me?
If you want to do it underneath comments, is that what you said? Or do you have a question?
No, I mean, I want to comment on this bill, if I may, because I am going to support this bill. I had reservations about it initially, but I do want to urge... I thought I had eliminated the possibility of that happening. I'm not sure what's going on here.
You gave me a voicemail earlier on your way here, so...
Well, it wasn't on the way here quite, but I was...
Okay. Well, now, open it up for debate. Go ahead, Bob.
All right. I am going to vote for this bill, although I initially had reservations about it, because I think that, as a council, we have to be very careful when we take an enterprise fund or an enterprise project and use it for incentives for economic development. But the reason I'm willing to support this is because we're not giving this parking away. We are, this bill calls for this parking to be paid. And I think that the one thing that is really incumbent on us as we consider bills like these is that we make sure, as we provide these opportunities to assist in development downtown, that we always remember that this fund, that this enterprise is a self-funding enterprise, and that we can't rob it and take away money from future development. That we have to make sure that we charge for these services, because as we develop downtown and as more people seek to live downtown, and as we attract more business to downtown, this parking is going to become valuable. It's not something that we just throw away. And so, because we are, we have established the precedent of charging for the parking, and I would anticipate that we, you know, review this every year and make sure that we're charging an adequate amount, so as the parking demand increases and as we need to build additional parking, which we will have to, that we have the funds available to do that. And so, if this were a free circumstance or whatever, I would vote against it, but because we are charging for this parking, then I will support this bill.
Okay. Other debate or comments? Councilman Bray.
Well, I, you'll remember that I had several questions when this came up the first time. Since that time, I've been able to visit with staff. I've been able to look at the site and understand the circumstances and the purpose, and I have, the more I became familiar with this, the more I came to favor it, and I will be voting for it as well.
Okay. Any other comments this evening? Carrie.
Thank you. And since I was late, I didn't get a chance to thank Mr. Birchfield for coming tonight, and also to thank him for the beautiful work that has been done on the Wymore Apartments. It was really in bad shape when he took on that challenge to renovate such an old property that had really been let go over the years, and it's truly amazing to look at the renovations. They're very historically accurate and just very modern, yet the historic character is all there, like, very well done. So thank you for investing in our community and in our downtown, and that's what we need, is to get those units filled and have an easy parking solution for your tenants, and the more people we get living in that area, the better. So thank you for the substantial investment, and not just that, but they're just beautifully done and did a very nice job. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, debate? Seeing none, I feel you're ready to vote. Roll call, please.
Pope.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Coon.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on, we'll have, at this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to take up Resolution 2011-37.
So moved.
Discussion. Seeing none. Is it roll call? Roll call to take it up. Roll call, please.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Coon.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
All right. Mr. Schlitter, if you could tell us more about 2011-37, please.
This reservation would authorize Roger Schwartz to be the new designated director of the department. Next, the Missouri Department of Natural Resources is providing a revolving fund program required. Currently, Matt Barash, the acting director, will be authorized to be back now. Mr. Schwartz. That would authorize Roger Schwartz to be the new designated for the Missouri Department of Revenue State Revolving Fund.
All right. Any questions for Steve? Seeing none, I think you're ready to vote. Roll call, please.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Coon.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on, we'll move on to presentations from the gallery on other topics. And tonight...
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, Melva Fast had prepared a presentation on ordinance, our Resolution 2011-38. Do you want to still do that, or...
I'm sorry. I was just...
Okay. I'm sorry, Melva, that we left that out. Won't happen again. Okay. Moving on to nineteen, presentations from the gallery on other topics. We have one person signed up tonight, Mr. Chuck Laumier. Please tell us your name and address, and we'll limit your remarks to three minutes, please.
Chuck Laumier, 6319 Rolling Road, which is outside the city limit. I love to remind people, I'm not a voting citizen of the city, but my trade is here, and I have a great interest in the functioning of the city. I'm here to announce this effort that I've been involved in for the naming of a creek across the river, but within Jefferson City's city limits in part, has reached its conclusion, and the U.S. Board of Geographic Names has approved the name Alton Creek. Right. Here's the slides that might illustrate that, and I'd like to present the mayor with a copy of the letter from the U.S. Board of Geographic Names.
Copies for any who might be interested.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say, I'll try to be brief, because I know our time is shorter than it was at one time. I would have liked to have been here two weeks ago, but could not make that meeting, and I particularly was sorry I wasn't here, because I wasn't able to wish Dave Griffith farewell. But I got the news of the official approval of the naming of the creek just before the end of the year. So you all have the letter. If you care to take a look at the slide, the second slide now, we'll put the map up, and I'll show you where the creek is. The dark line going around the area, there is the drainage of the creek. Well, the blue line is the creek itself. The outline around that is the drainage area, showing how big of an area this creek drains. The blue line through the middle, pretty much roughly paralleling Highway 54, is the creek, which now is named Alton Creek. I began this effort early in the year, and I'm sorry that one of our former councilmen is no longer here, Jim Penfold, because I learned that he had had a career with Department of Natural Resources, and I asked him where one would start in the process of naming a creek, and he said, over at the State Archives, a gentleman named Lynn Morrow is on the Missouri Board of Geographic Names. So anyway, the process proceeded. I made a presentation to them in May. They expressed their approval. Well, first of all, I brought the matter to this council and said, is there any objection to this unnamed creek being given a name? The council was nice enough to pass a motion that said, no, we have no objection, and a letter was drafted stating this. The Board of, the Missouri Board of Names met in May and generally approved the idea, but final approval could not come from them until their next meeting, which was in November. At that time, they officially approved the name. Then it went to the U.S. Geological Survey for final approval. So that approval was granted December 15th. And from this map, you can see just a little bit of this creek, roughly three-quarters of a mile at the bottom there. The Jefferson City's city limits now extend across the river bottom to the bluffs. but final approval could not come from them until their next meeting, which was in November. At that time, they officially approved the name. Then it went to the U.S. Geological Survey for final approval. Um, so, that approval was granted December fifteenth. Um, and from this map, you can see just a little bit of this creek, roughly, uh, three-quarters of a mile at the bottom there. The Jefferson City's city limits now extend across the river bottom to the bluffs. Uh, this creek comes out of the bluffs and then flows, uh, westward to meet Turkey Creek. So, that is where the creek is. It crosses Highway fifty-four four times, but we're unlikely to expect a sign along the highway because there is no bridge. The creek goes through culverts rather than over a bridge. If we could take a look at the next slide, I'll show you a little historical context. This is a map from eighteen ninety-two, topographic map. You can see Cedar City there. You can just see Turkey Creek at the, uh, right there, good. And flowing down along the railroad tracks, there was no Highway fifty-four yet, is the blue dotted line, uh, outlining the creek. And it flowed not into Turkey Creek, but over to the east and directly into the Missouri River near a place called Cedar Island, which no longer exists. So, uh, questions were raised when I presented this matter in May, well, whether this was really a creek or a branch. Uh, and as you can see, at one time, it did flow right down to the, uh, Missouri River. It's also a little larger in drainage than the next creek to the east called Neiman's Creek, variously called Neiman's Branch. But if you look it up in the database of, uh, U.S. Geographic Names, it is officially Neiman's Creek. This creek is a little larger than that. In addition, at the Missouri Board of Geographic Names meeting, the question was raised, can a branch flow into a creek or vice versa? And the answer was the U.S. or the, the Board of Geographic Names, Missouri or U.S., does not care. In fact, they were there approving a creek which flowed into a branch on the day I was there. So, I believe that's about all I have.
Any questions for?
Oh, a couple of historical, yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Well, I would like to point out a couple of very curious historical things. If you look at the bottom, right under the word Jefferson, you'll see that Where's Creek in that day was named Soans Creek. No one today remembers that, but this map seems to suggest that. The other thing, uh, that I find real interesting as geol- geogra- geography fan, Cedar Creek did not flow directly into the Missouri at that time, but flowed down along the river bottom and all the way to Cedar City. Turkey Creek flowed into it. It was Bill Lockwood who informed me of that fact at some point and I said, uh, that's hard to believe. But he's absolutely right and here's the historical proof of that. So, uh, I thank the council for their help in, uh, expressing no objections to the naming of a creek. It had been proposed by this board that they held, that they hold a little ceremony out along the creek and have a ribbon cutting or some kind of thing, uh, to dedicate the naming of the creek. That has yet to be approved by the board, so we don't know if that will happen. But it would be in May at the time of their meeting if they were to do that. So, with that, I will, uh, rest my case.
Chuck, thanks for being here. Thanks for bringing this up. Any, uh, any questions for Chuck this evening?
Just a quick comment. Chuck, interestingly enough, a week ago Sunday, we were on our way to, to Saint Louis. I never think about you. I've driven past that creek at least a thousand times in my life, I'm sure. But for some reason, that particular day, I thought about you and I looked to see where that creek was and I traced it up through, as I drove up through there. So, I, I think it's interesting, maybe ESP or, or something's going on here because-
Very good.
Apparently, you got your approval about the same time that, that that crossed my mind that day. But I, coincidence, obviously, but I thought it was kind of interesting that, uh, out of the blue-
Very good. It was very timely.
So, I'll look for it now the next time I go up there.
Yeah. I should mention that the reason Highway fifty-four and before it, the railroad, took the route that they took is that this creek carved an ice valley for them. So, this creek has some significance. That's why I thought it should have a name.
Well, keep us, keep us updated on when that ribbon cutting is and Chuck will be able to-
Yeah, it would be in May at the board meeting and I don't know the exact date. There's also no final, uh, uh, decision on that. And by the way, Mayor, Jeff City High is playing, um, Elias in basketball right now.
Okay.
Uh, starting at seven-thirty. Will I see you at the game?
Uh, you might, depending on what time, uh, we get to exit here. Uh, moving on next underneath, underneath the number twenty, Council and Staff Discussion of Presentation Topics. I think we've really pretty much had that unless there's anything else. Dr. Pope?
I would just like to say, thank you, Ray. You are a great asset to our county. I think we ought to make you an honorary member of our Parks and Rec. There should be some payback for all of your-
I've asked him to move into the city. He hasn't done it yet.
We either need to annex him or get him to move in.
Voluntarily. How close are you? You could always voluntarily make it. Okay, uh, any other new business this evening? Any unfinished business tonight? Any scheduled reports that we haven't covered already? At this point in time, we will entertain a motion to approve our closed session minutes from January third. It's been moved and seconded. Uh, discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Coon.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
All right, now with that, that will wrap up tonight's meeting. We are officially adjourned. Have a great night.